I shall inform other attendees of any recordings. At present, we are only aware of a recording being made by the local scene for broadcast and for the Zoom. If there's no other business, Mr. Chair, I would make, at this time, I would read the executive session language.
Please.
The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 30a, Section 21a, Clause 6, "to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body." This would be specifically in relation to 450 Little Sandy Pond Road, also known as the Atlantic Country Club, and in regards to the value of real property located therein. I would make a motion that we enter into executive at this time to discuss that topic to return at approximately 6:00 p.m. into open session.
Second. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself? Yes. We should be returning our party at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Welcome to the Select Board meeting of April 29, 2025. Please join the board in a pledge to the flag.
Thank you. We'd like to welcome Mr. Fernandez. He's going to give us a legislative update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and honored to be before this august committee. It's good to be back in the town of Plymouth. You know, our office is right up the street and we're spending a lot of time here with you and with your town manager. Just wanted to give a quick update on some of the things going on and things kind of to be expected in the legislature. And obviously, we really value our partnership and, you know, working through you to be your voice at the State House. Joined today with Jack Richardson from our team as well. He's the newest FALMA Select Board member, who's our district director as well. We've been doing a lot of work actually with Charlie in the town around the DCR property down by the waterfront and working there to make sure and see if we can get the town to take it over. Because this is an incredible asset that the town could use for different tourism, different types of events. I think it'd be, you know, something if the town took over, you could have a lot more control and get a lot more creative with the use of it. And we think that could be a really good thing. So now we're working with EEA on a potential land swap proposal, waiting for them to get back to us on that. But that's kind of the next steps there. And if that doesn't go through, we have some contingency options as well that we've been exploring. But at the end of the day, I think this is something that's doable and could be a really good thing for the town. One of the first things that came up in front of us when I took office, you know, less than, or around three months ago, was the closure of the only state-run mental health facility in our district in Pecassett. There's actually a fair number of Plymouth residents that go there because it's either Pecassett or Pembroke, kind of the two spots. And the state was looking to close that down. Really important that we have mental health resources in our region. A lot of big needs here. We actually have higher-than-average suicide rates in our part of the state. So really important that, in my view, not only that are we protecting these resources, but ultimately trying to look into expand them. And so we really led the push against this closure. I'm proud to say that with good conversations with the governor and her team, they reversed course. That's going to remain open. And then we're actually going to be a part of a task force that's assessing mental health resources in our entire region and looking at ways we might be able to expand them and have more access for people here. So some good news on the mental health front, which I know is really important for all of us. We've also announced we're doing, and we held our first one at Mass Maritime, a Cape Bridges Forum series where we're bringing the head of the mega projects for the state down to this area to have public forums. You know, it's center of the district, obviously more impact on the other side of the bridge. But we really want to have one in South Plymouth because Sagamore is going to be the first bridge that, you know, is replaced. And I think there's, while there's limited impacts, there's definitely going to be some changes in that part of town. So we're going to make sure that we get Louisa Paywansky, the head of the mega projects, to have a forum in South Plymouth. And we've already had discussions there. So we want to make sure that the residents in town are aware of what's going on and aware of potential aware of potential, if any, impacts there. We've also reached out and we've discussed this with the board and Stephen Cole and, you know, Brendan and others around, you know, could we host some sort of kind of incubator center, blue tech hub here in Plymouth? You know, the resources here are really ripe, I think, for it. And you have incredible ocean resources. And so, the Mass CC announced a clean tech corridor that they're working on, and we're working with them to bring them down to Plymouth and working on scheduling dates now because we want to kind of really push for the blue tech side of that, I think would be, here would be a really appropriate hub. And of course, we'll certainly let the, you know, you guys be the first ones to know once we work on a, once we work on a date. On the legislative side, a lot going on. You know, I was appointed the chairman of the Agriculture and Fisheries Committee this session, which is really important for our region, I think. We have a lot of farms here and of course have incredible fishing resources here as well, historic fishing industry. And our county, Plymouth County, second highest concentration of farms in the state, and it's only 1% off from the top. So, huge, big, big issue here, something we're going to work on to support our farmers and our fishermen locally. And this is a really good year for it because one big thing that's coming up this legislative cycle is the environmental bond bill. And so, this is a big bill that we're going to be able to put some funds to, some policy around supporting these resources here, whether it's fishers or farmers locally, but also big environmental projects. So I know we've, you know, just to put it on the radar, if there are projects in town that you're looking at that could be, we could apply for grants for, this might be a good avenue to stick an appropriation in a bond bill. And while that's not automatic money, it actually really helps when going to the state and getting grants for those types of projects. So, that's something that I think is, that's something I know is moving and coming up. And I'm vice chair of the Committee on the Environment, so we're going to have a front-row seat on some of these things. So, I think that's an opportunity for Plymouth to have a bite on the apple on some of these big kind of environmental and also economic development issues. We're also taking up education this session. This is one of the bright spots that we have. You know, of course Massachusetts, I think, you know, and Plymouth's school system's a terrific school system, but we rank number one in everything right now, clean sweep on every category in the nation. But there's broad agreement among a lot of colleagues and myself that, while we did some reforms, you know, a few years ago, that, you know, rising tide kind of raised all ships in the Commonwealth, some got a lot, a lot more money than others. And so, towns in our district, towns like Plymouth, they did better, for sure, but there are other, mainly gateway cities and some others, they're doing a lot better. And we just want to level the playing field a little bit more, not take away, but level the playing field to make sure that towns like Plymouth are getting more of their fair share, especially on a per pupil basis. So, we're going to be taking a look at that. And then, we've been having a number of conversations about the school bus issue. We've been working with, you know, my great House colleagues, Kathy and Michelle. And then also, you know, we've had a number of conversations with the Senate Ways and Means Chair about this issue, and we have a number of proposals. We're working back and forth with their staff on. Ultimately, I mean Plymouth, you know, it's a huge town. It's not super easy to get around, at least east to west, and that drives up a lot of the costs associated with busing. And if you were a regional school district, you know, you'd be in the top 15, you'd be getting back reimbursement from the state, right? So, you know, this is something that, whether it's changing to say you're, you fit into a top 15 regional school district or your X percentage over costs above the average, whatever the method is to get more money back for Plymouth, that's what we're kind of taking a look at and going to try to push on. And then there's some money there for this stuff, too. So I think, you know, because of the fair share amendment passed a few years ago, transportation and education are actually bright spots in our state budget, and that's the next big thing that we're going to be taking up. And so, you know, this is actually, we're pretty conservative, I'd say, in the state budget. I think we kind of have to be. There's a lot of uncertainty out there. There's already been a lot of cuts at the federal level. I know some downtown Plymouth's been cut. There's been a lot of other cuts that I watch, a ton of money the state is not going to be seeing just public sector. And then you take, you go into private nonprofit sector, huge, like multi-billion dollar cuts are already happening there that will have ripple effects. And so, I think it makes sense that we, on the Senate side, are putting forward, I think, a pretty conservative budget. But at the end of the day, you know, Massachusetts, we have the highest rainy day fund we've ever had. We have a double A plus bond rating. You know, we're in a really good fiscal state as a Commonwealth to weather some storms. And I think we might be entering some choppy waters, we'll see, to be determined, but a conservative approach at the time, I think, makes a lot of sense. And I'll just close by saying, you know, one thing we're going to really push on in this budget is around tourism. It's a driver of the economy here in town. I think it's underserved by the state for the amount of money we take in from tourism dollars, the lack of attention the state gives, I think, is a really disservice to the people that work in this industry, our restaurant workers, our hotel motel owners and the like. And so, we're really going to be pushing for more tourism funding as well. And just close by saying that, you know, we're here, we're accessible, we have an office right up the street in Cordage. I know that, you know, we communicate regularly and really appreciate that relationship. And if there's anything that you guys need or anyone in town needs, of course, can reach out to us anytime and we're happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dylan. Are there any questions or comments for Dylan? John?
Senator, thanks for coming tonight. A couple of softballs, hopefully. What is the rainy day fund up to?
I think it's around six bill right now.
Okay, all right. Excellent job. Is it one of the largest stabilization funds in, out of all the 50 states?
Relative to state budget, yeah. I mean, obviously not on a per capita, yes, obviously not as a, California, I think, has a bit more money than we do.
Okay, all right. And what is the date of the town election in the town of Falmouth?
Tuesday, May 20.
On a Tuesday? Oh my God, okay. All right, well, Jack, I'm wishing you the best.
Yeah, well, he's, unlike Plymouth, he doesn't even have a contested election, so he's scooting right in there. He's taking the David Golden approach to drive a slow one.
All right, Jack, congratulations.
Charlie?
Couple of things, Dylan. Number one, thank you for coming over the bridge tonight and speaking to us. I know Plymouth's very important to you. Obviously, it's important to us. But you talked about the bridge project and coming over and communicating with Plymouth on that, and I appreciate that. We're going to be severely impacted over an already congested area down in Cedarville. So, we're going to need a lot of communication down there, a lot of help down there. And you'll be hearing more about that. I mean, I was down there yesterday in one of the neighborhoods and I almost got killed pulling out of the street. And we all know, we need traffic lights, we need, I know there's a couple million going into the engineering study that's being done now, and that can't get completed soon enough so we can address the issues, the traffic issues down there. I know it's going to take a couple of years to fix it, but it needs, we're going to need as much help from DOT as we can get. Very important, so keep that in mind. And if you haven't been down there, I'm sure you have, it's awful down there. And we have other issue, possible issues that will be, I'm sure we're going to hear about that tonight, but so, but I want to thank you for that. The timeframe for the state parks, I've been working on that since I became a selectman. Rep. Murituri, you know, we started with the town manager. One of the first things when he got hired, I hit him with, we got to get that state, the memorial state park, and eventually we need to get the state pair. And I know we had a verbal agreement with the DCR commissioner. We went to Boston a couple of times and we had a verbal agreement, and he said he was going to honor that. And we had a meeting recently, and it's bureaucracy and has to go through the process, and I understand it. At that meeting, you said, you told me we should have it by next July, hopefully sooner. Do you think we're still on for that timeframe?
Well, that's the timeframe you need for a chapter, an article 97 from the legislature, just because it requires a two-thirds vote, so you got to have it by then. You know, as soon as we hear for when, if a land, if we're able to do the land swap, which would require the article 97, you know, we'd have, if we, you know, as long as we get like a month or at least a month, probably two months would be ideal heads up before that deadline of next year, we could probably get it done.
Okay, because every time I see you, I'm going to ask you about it, so.
Yeah.
Because it's that important, the state park for all our events down there. We want to be able to control our own events, the times of them. You know, the DCR has a rule, 10 o'clock, everything's closed across the state. But we're different, we're a lot different than most of the towns in the states with our tourism, with our tourism. It's the biggest industry here, so it's important to our tourism, our businesses. Also, the state pair, we need to get that fixed, we need to get it extended, and we need to get control of that. We want to put the cruise ship there, that's where we want to put it. We want to keep Captain John on the other side and the Mayflower separate. That's the plan. David Gould, I know, would be in charge of that, and I trust him immensely back there in the corner to run this pair properly. It's so important. Then we can bring in tall ships on the other pair. We can stay away from, which is a huge tourism draw, and we can keep, stay away from the fishermen and leave that separate so we don't interrupt what they're doing over there. So, it's very important. Then the last thing, as I saw recently, Kathy and Michelle, with the transportation, the bill they put, it can save us millions of dollars in Plymouth. Our costs are extraordinary. Again, we're a unique town, everybody knows how big this town is, but we're not just transporting around the town, we're transporting to other towns, too, with some of our vocational students in. So, it costs a lot of money in anything we could get from the state. So I'd hope that your colleagues, you could help with your colleagues on the Senate to get this pushed, so anyway.
Yeah, we filed a companion piece in the Senate, and then there's also, you know, there's a money piece, there's also the competition piece. And we also filed the, kind of the competitiveness companion bill to look at, you know, take a real look at, there's been a consolidation of these companies, there's very few, their rates are really high because of that lack of competitiveness. And so, we have a bill around that, also partnered with our House colleagues that we filed on the Senate side. So that's kind of the other piece of that. And I think we should, you know, we'd be happy to partner with you guys on the, on bringing the mega projects head to South Plymouth. Maybe we can do a joint, you know, we could work out a joint partnership in bringing that here. I think that would probably be good for the residents. And then, you know, we'll hear back from EEA around the land swap issue. I think DCR might have been over their skis a little bit and promises when their bosses are kind of the ones that are making the decisions, which is why we're with the EEA now.
Well, that was, the boss made the decision.
Yeah, well, now it's the, you know, it's the upper layer, but the town sent over land, right? And now we're, now it's up to their analysis to see if that meets the swap. If it doesn't, I think we could look at other land, you know, there are other things that we can do, and it's just to say that, you know, we're going to keep working it, too.
We need, we need, we need control of that. And the last thing I'll say is that when you first got elected, even before I told you how important Plymouth was to your district, very important, and you realize it now and you're keeping to your promise, you're coming here doing things like you're doing right now tonight, and it's very important to the residents. Communication is everything to the residents. So, I thank you for that.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Senator Fernandez. So I just wanted to highlight, thank you for coming for the update. We appreciate all your work and your House colleagues' work on behalf of your constituents here. But I just, you know, your constituents may not know that, you know, we have a good rapport and when you need something, we're able to help you out, and when you are able to help us out, you always do. So I just wanted to highlight that, that it isn't just coming here and giving these updates or before a town meeting. It's a recurring thing that happens whenever an issue comes up, that we are able to work collaboratively together. And I think you do a great job keeping Plymouth near the top of your mind, despite you have a very large district that's complicated to get around, like Plymouth is complicated to get around within your district. But I really appreciate the efforts that you put in and the open lines of communication that you've established with us. And I'm happy to help you in any way that I can going forward, and I know you'd do the same for us.
Yeah, thank you very much. Plymouth's the most important town in this district, and it's the one we spend the most amount of time in, and.
You say that to all the towns.
No, it's, our district, I could tell you, we spend, we spend all of our, well, we spend a lot of our, most of our time here. And it's a beautiful town, it's got a lot to offer, and, you know, I've been looking at real estate prices here. It's an easier commute for me from here, but it's not, it's not cheap in Plymouth. I've been looking at some of the listings.
We're trying to work on that, too. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Being of the time, we have a public hearing. In accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Law as amended, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held at Plymouth Town Hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, April 29, 2025, at 6:20 PM to consider the application for a new annual all-alcohol restaurant license from Plymouth to Merrick, LLC, doing business as Merrick House, 39 Court Street. Prabhin Tappa, manager, description of the premises is as follows. First floor, open concept dining room and bar, two restrooms, kitchen, basement for storage, one entrance, two exits. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should plan to attend this meeting. The board has a layout of the restaurant.
Hi, this is my first time talking in big mass like this, so a little bit nervous. My name is Prabhin Tappa, and I'm trying to open a small Indian restaurant in Plymouth. We've been trying to do this for a long time, looking for a space, and finally we found one, and really like excited and, you know, moving forward for this one. So today I'm here for the license, and I just want to explain, like introduce myself. My name is Prabhin Tappa. I'm originally from Nepal. I came United States 2002, and I came through the culinary. I used to work in a, I went to school back home in the culinary, that's how I got the job here. And I came here and started to work in a small restaurant and, you know, start to learn again. And mostly I was focused on Indian restaurant. That was my plan to, you know, in future, that I can do something of my own. And 2019, me and some of my friends had a chance to open a small restaurant in Wemout. 2019 November, we opened that right before the pandemic, and thank God, like it hit us, but we survived. And so, at that time also, we were looking over here because I really liked the Plymouth from the beginning. But, you know, since me and my friend decided we're going to do something, we had another chance came out in Brentree Mall, where we just recently opened another one, a small in a food court, six months ago. But that hunger is still Plymouth, I was keep looking at Plymouth, and then finally I found the space, and today I'm here for that space. And I hope like, I want to share my culinary experience with you guys. This is my 24th years in culinary, and I'm planning to move forward. And. And happy to share my, you know, spices with you guys.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone online? In favor?
Kenny?
Can you hear me? It's Kenny.
Hi.
Yes, Kenny Semkin, owner, Second One Brewing, the directly behind the location of the new restaurant. I just wanted to say in support, this is actually my second license hearing with Merrick House. I was actually in the Braintree hearing. So I've been aware of this restaurant for a while and my business partner is the landlord who owns the building. We had a lot of interest in places to move into that spot and looked at a lot of different, sorry, he looked at a lot of different options and really wanted to bring something that was a, to the, to Main Street or to Court Street. And just echoing on his behalf, since he wasn't able to be present for this, that, you know, this, this crew really stood out and really excited for them to open. I'm personally, personally excited to have them as neighbors. We've already met and discussed opportunities to work together. But the fact that this is a question and they're bringing some diversity to downtown is, is really welcome. So I just really hope the board will stand in favor with approving their licenses.
Thank you, Kenny. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? No? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone online speaking in opposition? Okay, now close the hearing and bring it back to the board. Mr. Blitzer?
Thank you. I'd like to welcome you to Plymouth. I've heard great things about your restaurant.
Thank you so much, sir.
About the food, how good it is. And I just want to let you know that you're the second restaurant owner from Nepal in Plymouth.
Oh, okay.
Kaysan Gill down at the Lobster Hut, which is one of, one of the landmarks, the Lobster Hut Restaurant in the waterfront. He came over from Nepal. It's a great story. Worked with his family and the, the owner, when he passed, left 75% of the restaurant to him and his family. And it's a great story and he's run that restaurant as Brett's parents are still, they're part of it. But he's doing a great job and he's a real credit to Plymouth. So you ought to get on and say hello to him. So you have a lot in common from Nepal, all right?
Thanks, I would say.
Yeah, just a question for you. I'm looking at your concept here. It seems to be a lot, all kitchen, most of it's kitchen. You do take, you only have about 40 seats, I think there's less than that.
The Indian, we need a, the reason for the big kitchen is everything we made it from scratch.
Yeah.
So when you do that, you need, the small kitchen not going to help us. And even the, the, I just want to share with you some, with my, another restaurant, we use like 14, 40 pound bags of onions every week. So normally that's, that's a huge and, you know, you need a big pot to make those kind of things and, you know, big place, especially like to mizumlas, like to prep all those things, you need a big kitchen. That's the main reason, like we're more focusing on kitchen so that, yes.
What it tells me is your, your food is the priority here and that's great.
Exactly, yes.
And you're coming to a very diverse town. We have a lot of different concepts, different cultures in restaurants and you're going to be a great addition to, to, to this town. So I wish you well with your, with your, with your concept and your restaurant and anything we can do to help you, okay?
Yep, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Wish of the board?
Make a motion to approve the issuance of the license?
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer, discussion. Seeing none?
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous.
Thank you so much, sir.
And we just go through the licenses.
Mr. Chairman, unless my colleagues would like to take any of the listed licenses separate, I would make a motion to approve the listed licenses as a group at this time. Second?
Discussion. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. On the administrative notes, one through 12, Mr. Canty's request in the hold, 10 and 11 till next week or another meeting?
Yeah, I just, I would, I know that these would op, the dissolution of the Designer Selection Board could impact the work on projects. We have a couple of schools coming online that we're going to need owners, project managers involved in that. And I know the Designer Selection Board meets as needed to select that, but I would just, and I know the building committee is going to be impacted by this change. I would just like to get impact, just input rather, from the building committee prior to making this change. We could still do it in advance of those issues, but I would just feel more comfortable having more information in regards to this. I know that the Designer Selection Board does not meet every month or anything because they don't need to, but they have an important role within the government that I want to see maintained in some fashion, regardless of whether they're doing it or whether the building committee's doing it or someone else.
Okay. Mr. Gennaro?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The issue we have right now is we don't have a quorum of the Designer Selection Board. And as Mr. Canty mentioned, we have a couple of projects that are currently on hold because our inability to pick an OPM and make decisions on certain procurements, which by law were required to have a Designer Selection Committee. Unfortunately, years ago, years ago, the town decided to have a Designer Selection, a standing Designer Selection Board that would then review these procurements. But in, in other communities and what the state has actually suggested through their Designer Selection Model Process is to have a committee that can get put together as necessary. So we're not in the situation we're in right now. So I would behoove the board if this is something, again, that the board decides to take up later, I would appreciate it if we could take it up sooner rather than later because as Mr. Canty mentioned, there are a couple of projects that are on hold. And when you read your packet of the information we provided, the building committee will be, probably would be a great part of any future committees that we put together and will be, the majority of the membership of these future Designer Selection Committees will be made up of the building committee. So our goal is to have probably, we're recommending five members for future committees and three of them are going to be from the building committee because we want their participation in the process. So again, it's just, we've been kind of delayed a couple of, on a couple of projects. So time is of the essence with those things. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware.
Well, how about next week?
As the board decides.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm, unless my colleagues have any others that they'd like to separate, I would make a motion for the remaining administrative notes, one through nine and 12, to be approved as a group. Second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden, discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Okay, before we get into the agenda items, I know Mrs. Holmes is here from Precinct 16 and I know you'd like to.
Nine.
Nine? No, you're jumping around. Okay, I'm sorry. Nine. Would you like to come up and, before we get into this?
Thank you, Mr. Quintil. Okay, so for those that, for those that don't know me, my name is Catherine Holmes. I am the chairwoman for Precinct Nine. I'm a town meeting member. And I'm here tonight because, can you hear me okay? So as you're aware, the town of Plymouth has been experiencing a significant boom in the residential growth. However, this has been particularly challenging to South Plymouth, as Mr. Blitzer had mentioned earlier this evening, where the infrastructure is limited and we are struggling to absorb the rapid, the rapid, where we're struggling to absorb the rapid increase in this development. Traffic congestion continues to get worse despite multiple traffic studies that are approved by town meeting and funded by our taxpayers. But unfortunately, we have yet to see any meaningful improvements in the Cedarville area. So I'm here tonight for the, to first to thank you for the opportunity that you're considering the town's right of first refusal for the Atlantic Golf Course. The residents of South Plymouth are actively seeking relief from unchecked residential development and I see this as a critical moment to pause, reevaluate and potentially preserve a vital part of our community. So beyond the environmental and open space value, the golf course provides meaningful economic benefits to South Plymouth, drawing golfers to the area who support all of our local businesses. It also serves as a valuable recreational and educational resource offered to our children for a healthy outdoor activity and they can enjoy a lifelong sport that they learn that, that takes them through their lifetime here in Plymouth. My request is that we leave no stone unturned. When evaluating Plymouth's options and looking at this private, this development that is potentially happening, we should be looking at private funding, grants, partnerships and long-term revenue opportunities like maintaining the golf course as a public asset. Yes, the $20 million price tag is significant, no question, but not acting may cost us far more and that is important to stress. If this development goes forward, we're potentially looking at over 400 homes, which require significant road upgrades and impact our fire and our police departments. I confirmed with Dr. Campbell today, who estimated that a development of this size will increase school-aged children by approximately 140 or more kids. And if it's a, if it's a 40B is established, it could significantly be much higher. He also confirmed that the schools in South Plymouth, which I've been saying for a long time, they are already at capacity. So bringing in any more kids is going to be a real problem. We simply will have to build out. The long-term cost to Plymouth and the town of Plymouth, both financially and environmentally, would be enormous. I reached out to Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, who's here tonight, and she estimated that in worst-case scenario, if we were having to put a loan forward for the full amount of the $20 million, that the average taxpayer would get approximately a $57 increase in their tax bill annually. So this is far less than the additional cost of services a development of this size would require. And when you compare this to the long-term burden supporting the potential residential expansion, it's really clear that we need a full and transparent cost benefit analysis. So I know that you're still in executive session on this, on this topic, and I would, I look forward to an update when it's available. So with that, I just wanted to come here tonight and personally extend an invitation. Precinct Nine is having a caucus. It's, we've had to move the date because we wanted to give you all time, more time to be able to evaluate this. So it's going to be on May 12th. It's at the Cedarville Fire Station. It's at 6:00 PM. And this is an opportunity for not only the Select Board to come and provide any updates that you may have, but also, most importantly, for our residents. It's an opportunity to share their concerns, ask questions and be heard. So I really appreciate you taking the time to hear me tonight. There's other residents that are here tonight and I hope you give them ample opportunity. And I deeply consider, request your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that I let Ms. Holmes go because she sent me an email asking to speak earlier, but the rest of the comments are going to be under the regular public comment, only because I have to keep going with the schedule and I have staff here. But I've always made it a policy if somebody needs to or wants to. So there's one more. He just has an announcement from the Airport Committee and we're going to get right to the agenda.
I will make it very fast. Sorry. Adam Bond, I'm chairman of the, of the Airport Advisory Commission. We meet the fourth Thursday of every month. The next meeting will be May 22nd. I'll probably come back again to give more information. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that meeting is going to basically be open to public comment so that we can establish what are the problems people are experiencing, put them up on a dry erase board and begin to accumulate them, prioritize them and have an understanding of what it is that the community wants to advise on and how it wants to go about doing so. The Selectman created us, so we figured we might do them the honor of actually trying to accomplish some of that advice. Other than that, other than possibly trying to find a larger room than where we do it at the airport conference room, we may try and find something larger, but it will still be May 22nd at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Four Daughters Compassionate Care Incorporated. Ms. McKay, Town Council. Basically, Kate, this is just state mandates, updates, changes.
Good evening, Kate McKay, Town Council. This is similar to what we did with Eagle Eye a few weeks ago, an amendment to rectify the deficiencies that the state has found with the original underlying community host agreement. And just for the record, for Four Daughters, the amendment is rectifying the underlying agreement from November 8th of '23, which would have come before the board. They were issued a non-compliance letter on December 6th of '24, and this is now the amendment for your consideration to rectify the deficiencies.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Canty?
Attorney McKay, is this like the other one where the state had previously approved it and then decided that they didn't like it anymore?
Yes.
Okay. Do we expect this will continue to recur or will they, have they made up their mind at this point?
Mr. Canty?
Are you speaking in particular to this agreement or all of the other establishments?
It's just odd that they would, they've previously approved all these agreements and nothing has, the agreements remain in effect and then they just come back and say, oh, by the way, here's this other thing to deal with. So it'd be, you know, it's not, I know it's not your fault, but it's, it's just a strange way for state agency to behave.
I don't disagree, but I'm happy to work to rectify the deficiencies if that's what they're looking for.
Well, I appreciate your willingness to deal with a seemingly inconsistent state actor. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none?
I make a motion to approve the, either the amendments to or the host community agreement itself. Yes, the host community agreement itself as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer, discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Hidden Wonders LLC.
This is a similar situation. Just for the record, Hidden Wonders had a host community agreement that was dated September 5th of 2023. Their non-compliance letter was dated March 19th of 2025 and the amendment is before you for your consideration. And I believe we have a representative, Attorney Rubin?
Yes.
For Hidden Wonders, if there are any questions or if anything else has occurred to you to ask.
Any questions on the board?
Question I have is, what's your timeframe for getting open over there? I know it's been.
To be open?
Yeah.
I think we're hoping for late June, early July.
Yeah.
Middle June? First week of June? Okay.
Right.
I'm being, I'm being, first week of June if possible.
Right, okay. And I know you've been working on this for a while, trying to get through all these regulations and stuff. And I, and I think because it's so new, this, this whole, this whole concept of selling marijuana, it's, it's kind of a new concept to the state. I, I'm kind of giving a pass a little bit. I know you guys get frustrated and I know you have a successful place over in Brockton. If you want to just talk about that a little bit so everybody knows what you do. You have a very successful place in Brockton.
Yes, he does. He was one of the first, actually might be the first shop that opened.
Yes.
In the city of Brockton back in 2021, I believe. So he's had no issues, Mr. Marion, so.
I was trying to get him up there to maybe.
You were trying to get him up here?
So if you would.
I don't know if he wants to. But the fact that he has run a successful operation there for the last several years has spurned his entrepreneurship to open another location, found this Plymouth location and it's been working very cooperatively with the town. The town has been very good to work with and appreciate it, counsel. The town has been very good to work with, and appreciate it, council, as well, working very diligently. We're on a very tight timeframe relative to opening, and the place is completed, has been fit up and ready to go. Just have some regulatory hurdles as far as hearings and things and the timing of those things, so we really appreciate the town going the extra mile to really help us to get us hopefully open on that June, in that June date, so.
Well, I met the Marion family, had a restaurant in the 90s in Brockton. That's how I met the family. I haven't seen them in a long time, and, but I know the first-class family, they, they run a great business there in their tuxedo business and other things they do for their community. They're very involved in the city of Brockton, so.
Thank you.
Welcome to Plymouth, Mr. Marion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Wish of the board?
Make a motion to approve the host community agreement as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Senior Task Force Committee Restructure, Commissioner Braddy. Welcome.
Okay. So thank you so much for hearing our recommendations this evening in regards to the Senior Task Force. You have a memo, but I've prepared a small PowerPoint just so everybody at home can follow along, and you'll know what we're asking. Okay. So just a quick refresher for those of you that were on the Select Board when we started the Senior Task Force and you so generously supported that endeavor. The purpose and mission of the Senior Task Force was to create a sustainable community blueprint of excellence that serves seniors and residents of all ages, to designate Plymouth as a leader and model community for adaptable senior policy, and to recommend senior policies to be adopted by the Plymouth Select Board and supported by town meeting and town administration. That was our original intent. And then the Senior Task Force Committee was created in 2021 with the Plymouth Select Board formally voting to endorse its formation on August 17th, 2021. Subsequently, the Select Board appointed 17 Senior Task Force Committee members in 2021. The Senior Task Force Committee at that point spent three-plus years obtaining a Town of Plymouth Age and Friendly designation, which was successfully achieved in April of 2024. An action plan, which is a required part of the designation, was discussed, and from April 2024 to the present, the original and existing Senior Task Force Committee members began implementing one facet of the first action plan. That initial action plan is currently focused on providing formal dementia training to Plymouth businesses to create a welcoming community environment for all. The Senior Task Force Committee's goals are comprehensive and continuous, as they are community-driven to create a sustainable blueprint for all Plymouth residents and visitors of all ages. As such, it is important to create a formal committee membership and terms for Select Board appointments. The Senior Task Force Committee recommends the following for Select Board consideration. We would like the Senior Task Force Committee to have 11 Select Board-appointed Senior Task Force Committee members, one Center for Active Living Management staff as the 12th appointee, which would be a tie-break and only in voting power. It's really important that we have a member of Cal be part of this task force to keep their pulse on what's going on in the senior community. That would, those 11 Select Board members and one Center for Active Living Management staff would serve a three, three members would serve a one-year term to expire in June, June 30th of 2026. Four Senior Task Force members would serve two-year terms expiring June 30th, 2027, and four three-year terms expiring June 30th, 2028. Just of note, the senior, let me move that, thank you. The Senior Task Force Committee has had the same dedicated volunteer, volunteer members since its inception in 2021. Pretty impressive group of volunteers. Despite the lengthy service time of these founding members, several of these members are willing to continue in varying service terms to retain historical and institutional knowledge as new members are integrated into the community. We recognize that they would have to formally apply, and that would be at your discretion, but just so you know, there would be a continuous cycle of historical knowledge, which we think is important with all the work that's been done over three-plus years. The Senior Task Force Committee recommends requesting, I went too far, just kidding, seeing if you're awake. The Senior Task Force Committee recommends requesting a Select Board liaison for this committee. This originally was, the Senior Task Force was created with former Select Board member Harry Helm, who was instrumental in, in this creation, and since that time, since Harry's left, Select Board member Charlie Blitzer has been continuously supportive of this endeavor and attends every committee meeting, and we appreciate that very much. We think it's important to have a Select Board liaison. The Senior Task Force Committee also recommends that future committee members potentially appoint subcommittee members with appropriate expertise, subject matter, or other liaison members as deemed appropriate. Given the nature of the work and the depth and breadth of the work, we may have experts in subcommittee capacity. So, thank you always for your support of the Senior Task Force Committee's mission, and on behalf of the Senior Task Force Committee, we truly appreciate your consideration of this matter. You'll also notice that we had this logo created, Agent Dementia Friendly Plymouth. We are on this journey together. You will start to see that mark, those marketing materials throughout town. I will be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Any questions for Commissioner Braddy? Any comments? Seeing none. Wish of the board?
Make a motion to restructure the Senior Task Force as presented by Commissioner Braddy.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Golden, second by Mr. Blitzer. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Great job. Public comment. Anyone wishing to speak in the public comment? When you come up for public comment, please make sure the green light's on and you identify yourself for the record, please.
I first want to thank the board for your service to the town.
Green light. There you go.
There we go.
Yeah.
Good evening. I want to thank the board first and foremost for your service to the town. I know it's a lot of times an unthankful job, and I appreciate it. My name is Chris Jones. I live on Eagle Drive, the street directly across from Atlantic. I've been a resident of Plymouth since 2001. I have three children. Two have currently graduated from Plymouth South High School, and my youngest is a junior. All three of my children have worked at, or currently work, at Atlantic. All three walk to work each day until they got their license, leaving a little more free time for myself and my wife. Over the approximately 30 years Atlantic has been in business, they have employed countless number of high school students from neighborhood, from our neighborhood and the area surrounding the course. Their jobs at the course are customer-facing, so they learn invaluable life lessons that will serve them well in the future workforce and whatever they endeavor to do in life. In full disclosure, I have been a member of Atlantic for the past few years. With that being said, it's really no secret that I wish for it to remain a golf course. If that's not an option, above all else, I'd like to see the property become anything other than another development. The $20 million offer seemed like a staggering amount of money when I first learned of this. Then I did some thinking and a little bit of my own research. There's several reasons that make financial sense for the town to purchase the property. Most importantly is the opportunity to prevent almost certain substantial tax increases for the entire town. I know the board has seen indoor heard of the potential of upwards of 400 homes being built on the property. It's an almost inevitability that the, the town would be facing construction of a school in the very near future, or at the very least adding on to South Indoor Indian Brook. The cost to build a school, staff the school, pay salaries, healthcare, pension benefits, when you calculate all that, $20 million seems extremely low in comparison. I know the board is exploring options in executive session. I would like you to also consider things that have been done in other towns. I would urge you to explore creating a golf enterprise account. This would enable the course to operate within its own budget, independent of yearly tax increases to residents. With an enterprise account, the people who do not play golf are not burdened by another tax increase for a piece of property they will not use. Obviously, the first few years in the scenario, you'd have to create a golf stabilization account to get the course up and running until it can meet its financial obligations should the town decide to purchase it. Terms can be written in that agreement so that after stabilization account and the course reaches a, a point of self-sustainability, that money is then returned to the, the tax levy. To further offset costs, there's a pre-approved plan to develop driving range into 58 townhouses. There's also two buildable lots on the property that abut Little Sandy Pond Road. Should the town purchase the property, all three parcels of land could be auctioned off as surplus to a developer. The proceeds from that could then be put back into the enterprise account to further pay down the debt from a proposed stabilization account. The property has the potential to literally cost taxpayers absolutely nothing. Chapter 53F allows for the profits from enterprise account to be invested, generating even further revenue. There's a bar and fully functioning function room and restaurant. These could be put out to lease, independent of the town, and that therefore eliminates liability from alcohol service on behalf of the town. In short, I believe to be, it's a financial no-brainer in the interest of time. Lastly, I attended a meeting of the Land Use and Acquisition Committee. I would urge the board to adhere to their recommendation and move forward with exploring purchasing the property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Somebody behind you, Steve.
Steve Leiden. I'm a member of the Distinguished Visitors Committee, and I would like to let everyone know that we will be sending 10 students and eight delegates to Shishigahama, Japan this end of July, beginning of August. This is a great sister, sister relationship that we have, and the schools will be sending the students, the students and the two chaperones will be living in home, in host, host families. It's a great experience. They were here last year. They came here, they have 15 students. We're sending 10 this year. But it's, it's a great opportunity to keep this sistership going on, and the schools could, you know, if anyone wants to donate, the schools are taking different, you know, donations to help the students pay for their trip. I think the airfare is close to 3,000, and then spending money or whatever, but it's, the airfare is very expensive. It's hard to set a rate on the, the airfare because they set one rate, but then on the day of the flight, they charge you a fuel charge, or whatever they pay that day, that's what you're going to pay. So, you know, we're saying it's around 3,000, you know, for the students, but if you could help them out, it'd be great. We're having a delegation to go, they're going to represent us. It, it's just a great program, and I wish those people know in Plymouth that we do have that and support it. Thank you.
I would like to take this opportunity, number one, to thank you all for your service to the Town of Plymouth. My name is Don Daly, and I am the golf professional at Atlanta Country Club. So this is very dear to my heart. I am also a resident of the Town of Plymouth. I firmly believe that the best option regarding Atlantic Country Club is for the Town of Plymouth to purchase the property and to operate the golf course as a municipal golf course. As Chris said, the $20 million does seem like a lot of money, however, in the grand scheme, it is not. It would be a fraction of the total cost the town would incur if Atlantic became a development. During the past 30 years, Atlantic has provided many residents of the town, as well as the two high school golf teams, a place to play golf and socialize with friends. It has also provided employment, not only for myself, but as Chris said, for a number of high school students and retirees of the Town of Plymouth. It gives the retirees something to do. If the town did purchase Plymouth Country Club, the golf course would continue to be a place of employment and enjoyment for residents of Plymouth, and it would be profitable immediately. If anyone here questions the profitability of a municipally-owned golf course, there are surrounding towns, Town of Bonstable, Hingham, Acushnet, Brewster, Howard, you can look it up, it's public records, how much money they generate, and as Chris said, it would be a burden to no taxpayer in the Town of Plymouth. It would be self-sufficient as an enterprise fund. Thank you for, for your time, and I hope you turn every stone. Thank you.
I want to say thank you to the board of Selectmen for your service to the town. My name is Jay Lopes. I've been a resident since 1997. 16 of those years, I actually lived on the golf course of Atlantic Country Club, and I currently live in the ponds of Plymouth. What Atlantic Country Club has given to this community, for some of these young people, is the game of golf, work, and also the fact that it keeps open space for the Town of Plymouth. Now, there's one thing I've learned, is open space is where you're going to save on the taxes. Making this a housing complex is not an option for the Town of Plymouth. Now, we can sit up here for the next 20 minutes and talk about the infrastructure down there? The roads down there cannot handle 400 to 1,000 homes that this is potentially looking at. I'm going to ask the board of Selectmen to please look into purchase the land. I think it's going to be valuable for the town in the long run, and there's many options we can do, like Mr. Jones said, enterprise. We heard Mr. Daly, who's the golf pro, and he basically said with confidence, we can make this work and make it profitable. So please, can we look at every option as we can to keep Atlantic Country Club? Thank you.
Thank you, Selectmen and others. I really appreciate your willingness to listen to public comment this evening on this important topic, the Atlantic Golf Course. We know you're in executive session, but we wanted to get some feedback and thought to you. My name is Michelle Christensen, and I'm a resident at 252 Valley Road. I also happen to be on the ballot coming up in May as a town meeting member for Precinct Nine. I moved to Plymouth in December of 2019, just before the pandemic hit, and I have loved this town. It is my town now. I'm here to discuss with you, though, this evening, one of my other favorite subjects besides Plymouth, which is water. While I could spend hours on this topic, trust me, I'm going to keep it very brief for you. In my early career, while living in Denmark as a civil engineer, where I specialized in hydraulics, thermodynamics, ice and snow engineering, really boring topics, I tell you, I spent considerable time in Greenland and Denmark working on civil engineering projects for Greenland. One of my key projects, and probably the most challenging project I had, was focused on designing ice tunnels through the Greenland Ice Cap. These tunnels were designed to stay frozen year-round while allowing liquid water to flow through them. This water provided energy for electricity, as well as, and most importantly, a fresh water source. Fortunately for us and our town, we don't have to go to such extreme or extensive efforts to find and source water for our future. Our future lies in the aquifer already in place under the Atlantic Golf Course and the surrounding areas. We have to protect this aquifer. We cannot allow development haphazardly to just come in there. It must be protected at all costs. Have you ever wondered why there are so many properties in South Plymouth where we, we zone them as rural residential? We didn't do that to be snobby with the three-acre lots. You guys were smart with it. You did that. There's a logic to the zoning. There's a logic to the zoning. It is there specifically to protect the aquifer. This is our future, not just South Plymouth's future, but Plymouth's future, and the entire town will need this resource as a potential well at some point. The last thing we want is to have to undertake an effort as significant and costly as what I had to do for the Danes and the Greenlanders to acquire water. Acquisition of the property by the town will give the town ultimate control over it, including if and when any development might happen, may not happen, keep it as golf course, ensuring protection of the water source. That needs to be one of your key points. I also attended the Land Use and Acquisition Committee meetings on this property. I want to commend the committee for amazing amount of time and effort that they put in in investigating the property and very thoroughly going through the zoning options of what could and could not happen with the property. To that point, please heed their recommendations, go back through and acknowledge their due diligence by looking exactly at what they recommended. Take their advice. They knew what they were doing. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and I really appreciate all you do for our town. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Mr. Malaguti?
Eric Malaguti, Precinct Two, but not telling me anything. I am asking tonight for the board to revisit their vote on admin note number three. The vote for that was to dissolve the Energy Committee. I, the vice chair of the Energy Committee, now formally defunct as of this moment, is still in the process of doing multiple tasks within our short, mid, and long-term goals. We were never notified of this, except for when I got notification of this very earlier this week, that this was even a topic to be discussed. The members were never even contacted to know that this was on the potential chopping block, nor was it even discussed for the committee to even vote themselves to dissolve the committee. We, while we may have similar aspects of another committee that's still in existence as of this moment, we have a very different trajectory than that committee does, and also with what we've been seeing lately over the past two to four months, especially in this state with electric and utility prices. One of our long-term goals, I'm looking at doing it as a municipal light plant in a way of exploring those options as well, too, is one of our long-term goals. I think it's prudent for this committee to still be in existence. The actual reason why this committee was created in the first place was to explore the option of a municipal light plant. So I believe the committee should still be in existence and have this as a vote on their agenda to actually acknowledge the members, so that they're not blindsided, saying that they're not even part of a committee anymore, without even knowing this was even a topic. And then we can talk about either a merger or consolidation or something like that in the future. I think it's not prudent for the board to basically blindside the committee by having a vote of no action by the committee themselves, and this should be reinstated in haste. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Nobody online? Okay. Town managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Sylvia, General Assistant Town Manager, on behalf of the Town Manager tonight. I've got a couple of things to update the board on. First off, due to the downpour that happened on Saturday, the Herring Festival was rescheduled to Sunday instead. This is the second year in a row that this happens, and that the weather affects the events, but we're happy to announce that the fun was undampened by the rain and that the event was a total success. I'd like to thank personally the Department of Energy and Environment for being the town's liaison to this event. Additionally, staying on that note, the Energy and Environment Staff has begun prepping Long Beach for the season and working together with the Recreation Division of the Health and Services Department. We wanted to announce that we're establishing a pilot program to use the Passport, that's a mouthful right there, hold on, Passport Parking Platform, there we go, to pay for parking at the beach. This is the same platform that is used throughout downtown by Park Plymouth, and the goal is to have a more efficient parking plan so that traffic doesn't back up into 3A. The Fire Department would like to announce that construction has resumed at the Mandeville Fire Station, and that the project is going along very well, and based on that, the chief expects to have an open house at some point in time later in the summer. So at that point in time, we'll let the folks know so that the residents can be invited and you as well. Additionally, the Fire Department wants to announce that there's going to be a sobriety checkpoint this Friday. This is going to be done in conjunction with the State Police, and the Police Department plans to distribute additional information throughout the week on this event so that folks know what's going on. Staying with the Police Department, additionally, there's going to be furniture arriving soon at the new downtown satellite office, so progress is being made on that end as well. Similar to the Fire Station, the Police Chief expects, once that is all completed, to have an open house so we can have residents and board members as well tour the new facility. The Plymouth Public Schools wanted to announce that this Saturday, May 3, they are going to hold the Health and Safety Fair at Plymouth North High School, rain or shine. As part of that event, there's going to be a Hope Day Walk that starts as a center of active living next to the high school, and is going all the way to the library, which is going to be followed by many vendors on site in a touch-a-truck event. So please stop by if you can. And last but not least, going back to some important matters, I just want to remind folks that town election is on May 17. That folks, as we know, for the last couple of years, have the additional option now to vote in person early, which will happen between May 7 and May 14, or they can vote by mail by requesting a ballot, which are currently being mailed now by the Town Clerk's Office staff. So you should start receiving them soon as you request them. Pending any questions, that's all I have for the board. Thank you.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, Sylvia, thank you. I just want to just add a couple of things to your report, just to clarify. Number one, the police annex, I want to let everybody know that that's being donated by the PGDC. That space is being donated by the PGDC. So it's not costing the taxpayers any money, and we're going to have a public safety person down there, it's going to be secure for the businesses, as well as, you know, the residents down there. This is going to be a great program for the downtown waterfront area. Also, while I'm on the parking, just clarifying, Long Beach, so people understand that instead of folks coming paying $10 or $20, or the folks that are working the front will be actually parking the cars. So they'll be able to get more cars, and it's going to be more efficient. Whenever you have a dirt parking lot with no lines, people don't park, you know, where they should. So this is going to be more efficient, which more residents will be able to come down and use that, and the Passport is a pretty, it's a free app, and it's very easy to work, and they'll be able to show them how to do that. So this is going to be good for that beach area. I just want to clarify, so people don't think that you're just going to get on there and, you know, it'll be efficient, I believe. So anyway. Who's going to be running that down there?
The Recreation Department. Obviously, we always have staff helping folks park, but as you mentioned, Selectman Black, sir, the goal is to be more efficient with our space. As you mentioned, dirt parking lots, pretty difficult unless you have folks guiding people.
I used to park cars at Cape Cod Coliseum back in the 70s, and I'll tell you what, it was crazy if you didn't get them under control. So that's what they're going to be doing, and that's what sold me on that, because at first I was like, it's not going to work, you know, but it will if they're parking them like that. So anyway, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'm just going to have the famous question, because as soon as it gets a little warmer, we're going to be hearing from Martin Park, we're going to be hearing from White Oars Beach. So before all that happens and it's 90, are we ready? I don't want to put you on the spot, you can wait till Derek comes.
No, that's okay.
Put it in the notes to see where we're at, because it happens every year, the minute it gets hot out.
That's okay. I'm actually trying to go through my calendar, because I wanted to give you the specific date, but we have met already. There's a group that meets every year, the Town Manager, in the last, well, in the three years that he's been here, he's convened the Rec Department, the Police Department, and a lot of the stakeholders that have to deal with summer activities, if you will, and we've already had our first meeting to kind of go over the plans for this year. As you mentioned, as soon as it gets hot, a lot of folks come into town, and I don't blame them, we have a beautiful town that they want to enjoy, but that influx of folks obviously requires a lot of coordination between our departments. So I'm pleased to announce that, yes, we've started those meetings, we'll continue to have those meetings throughout the summer as things progress to address any issues that come up.
Well, that was a good answer. Thank you. Any other questions? Move on to new business? I just have a little piece here that's interesting. I was somewhere last week at the gym, and I bumped into one McKenna Coolidge, and she's a recruit that's in the Police Academy, and she'll be coming through the academy in, I think, June 5th or 6th, she'll be graduating. So you'll all be meeting her very soon, but she's excited to come to town, and I promised her, we've got an up-and-coming Police Department, and we're doing everything in our power to make it more attractable to officers and patrolmen. And she said, I heard that. For what it's worth, she's already hearing some of the things that we're doing, and we touched on at town meeting, it's already at the academy, so it's working. So you're going to be really proud when you meet her. She's really, you know, I wouldn't want to mess with her. She's pretty strong. So anything on the letters? Or you got new business, Charlie?
I just got a piece on, Mr. Canty might say something about the, isn't the townwide cleanup, that's on Saturday, I believe.
It is.
I know I was, saw some signs out there, and I'll let you speak on it, because that's dear to your heart, it is the mind, too.
Sure. So yes, the townwide cleanup is this Saturday. You can sign up. There's links on the website. You can sign up at the DPW Department in terms of letting them know where to place your bags, that you're going to place your bags so they can be picked up and recovered. You'll put them out after you finish picking up the trash, wherever you choose to pick up the trash, and they'll put them out on Saturday, and then they'll pick them up on Sunday. You can choose to go wherever you would like in the town, although you can certainly look for suggestions if you just want to help out where you're most needed as well. But this has been going on for, I think, about 18 years or so, been very successful, a partnership between the town and Sustainable Plymouth, the Open Space Committee, and I know a lot of people put in a lot of time and effort organizing and executing that. So I appreciate their continued effort, and I look forward to having significant participation once again. It'll happen again sometime in September or October as well. Thank you. And thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Anything else? Moving on to letters? Anybody have anything on the letters? We received a letter from Jane Morrow on the intersection of Halfway and Long Pond Road, the intersection, and I sent you, at least I think I did, some pictures of some tree removal, and it's pretty devastating, and I believe it's, you know, road improvement from Makepeace in that area of town. So I figured where she wrote the letter, you know, I'd gladly share it with anybody if you didn't get it, but I drove down there Sunday after work, and I'm talking trees disrounded, I'm not exaggerating. That's why I took the pictures, so you could all see them. And I understand, to make some of the improvements, you have to do that. So I went on to ask her if they had a public notification, you know, for the neighbors in the neighborhood, and she wasn't sure about that, but they did have something at the middle school. So I guess, you know, we can't replant those trees, but I hope, if you could check Sylvia and see if some of those plantings can go back when they're done. I understand that, you know, and it's funny, John, I haven't been down, you know, right there that time, and I looked, and I said, that looks like Walter Morrison's house, right? I don't know how many years it's been. So I asked her when I spoke with her yesterday morning. She says, you're absolutely right, that is Walter's house.
I was down there today. I saw what exactly it was.
Yeah, and usually you can't see his house, honestly, from, yeah, so if you know the area. So it was pretty devastating, and she was very polite, and, you know, she just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. I think she thought, they think it's a little overkill, and I don't see that, but a bike lane, a sidewalk, you know, they feel the theme that if it was just a light, but I know how that goes, because I've been, I lived there in Cedarville, too. They all want the light, they don't want the rotary, but on the state road, the town really can't say what goes there, you know? That's what I'm being told. So I was respectful, it was a good conversation, and so that goes into the next thing. So I drives down, I keep going, I'm going into Cedarville now, and I said, I got to see the 71 Hedges Pond Road. So I went right by it, actually. So I turned around in Mary Lou's, and I went back, and I said, it must be right here, there's the landfill, there was a little driveway. So I pulled in there, and what do I see? I see a hole. That's what I saw. That's, you know, the trees have been taken down, but it's been a hole for quite a while. According to Mr. Hartman, it's been, I'm calling it a hole, because that's what it is, a valley, if you will, and it's been like that since a glacier. So it wasn't what I thought it was going to be, and I, well, I'm on the subject of this, since I'm on my little tour of South Plymouth. I believe the neighbors' concerns about large vehicles leaving that lot for anything they're going to be removing or bringing in, I think they need to go out to 3A. I mean, that's a no-brainer, and I honestly, I don't see any trucks of any size going down Long Pond Road the other way. I mean, it just makes no sense at all. So I'd like to see the ZBA decision in the earth removal for that, and see what the conditions are, and make sure that those vehicles are not going through the neighborhood. I really don't believe they are. But I did my due diligence, and I went all through that, and, you know, it's sitting next to a landfill, which is, I'm going to assume, a bad 21E. So I think that's why we probably haven't heard too much about water in the aquifer, because it's already contamination rate, they abut each other. So I'm glad that I did get on there for this other cause, and went all the way down there and checked it out, because I know it's devastating when the trees come down, but, you know, this has been for a long time, and things are being said wrong, and I'm not going to go into that here, but I am going to go to the podium, because I miss public comment, because my vice chairman wasn't here, but if you'd be so kind later at the end, I would like to say a few things on the public comment as a citizen. Okay. Tonight? Yes, sir, but I want to finish what we're doing. So that was letters, and if I went a little bit, that's because that's how the ride took me Sunday. So.
I'd be happy to give you three minutes.
Well, I'm going to try. I'm going to try. Old business? Nothing on the old business? Then if I can, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd like to go to the podium. Okay. It is. Dick Quinto, Precinct One.
Thank you.
Born here in 1958. That's 66 years ago. Okay, enough with the jokes, I'm starting to sound like Mr. Canty. You know, what really bothers me, because in all my years of sitting on this table, and it's been an honor, is we have lawsuits. Some things you can avoid, some things you can't. I'm just a morals guy, and we have a lawsuit here, and when you look at some of the names on it, I just want the residents to know what's really going on here. More than 10 residents of the Commermault of Massachusetts, Linda Combs, Leslie Jonas, Thomas Uriatell, Paula Markcott, I'm trying to go as fast as I can, Brett Whitburn, Susan Murphy, Sybil Holland, William Lawrence, Joyce Backey, Geraldine Williams, Angelina Smedberg, Nicholas Smedberg, Nicholas Ramirez, Patricia Holmes, Sheryl Zioli, Shao Hala, Community Land and Water Coalition. Okay. That's the lawsuit that I believe is going ahead Friday. This is a lease for the Center Hill Preserve in Plymouth, which we bought, and the gentleman's right in the room here tonight, Mr. Kohan, and I were on the CPC at that time together. We bought this from the Jocelyn Diabetes Foundation, I believe is the proper term. When you look at this lease, this lease, I believe, according to this, I'm not a lawyer, no Perry Mason, but it's listed as the Community Land and Water Coalition. However, if you go online on the Secretary of the Carmel Malta, Massachusetts, Francis Galvin, it says the exact name of the nonprofit corporation, Community Land and Water Coalition, Incorporated. The name was changed from Save the Pine Barrens, Incorporated, on February 25, 2025. Nonprofit corporation. Well, who's the Pine Barrens Corporation? Now they're gone by the wayside. Well, if you go on LinkedIn and type in Frank Mann, he's the vice chairman. So I guess the point of all this is, the residents and taxpayers in this community paid to purchase the Jocelyn property, which is now the Center Hill Preserve, and this board, members, some of the members, and myself included, decided to give them a sweetheart deal of 300, I believe, a month for 10 years, with two five-years extension, if I'm reading this right, and I could be wrong. So feel free to, I guess the point of the story is, the residents of this town bought the preserve, then they leased it to the same people that are suing them. I have a problem with that as a taxpayer in this town, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinto.
in the town of Plymouth. I love this town. The Center Hill Preserve is absolutely gorgeous. This town leased it to the Pine Barrens Association. There is no Pine Barrens Association anymore. It's another corporation. We didn't rent that space to the Water and Land Coalition, so they're trespassing. I think that you call the police and have them arrested for trespassing and throw them the hell out. You know, they're not there, and they don't exist. So what are they doing in that building? They're trespassing. They should be arrested and thrown out. Thank you.
The one thing I didn't mention when I was up there is the president of the offices of the corporation, Community Land and Water Coalition, are as follows. President, Donald Howland, Randall Jr., Treasurer, Rachel Atkins, Clerk, Margaret E. Sheehan. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn. Thank you.